I would like to remind everyone to please make sure that all the phones are turned off or the vibrating position, please. Also be advised our city council meetings are broadcast on TV, on Comcast Channel 99, and rebroadcast on WMGJ radio. This meeting of the city council will now come to order. The Chair calls on City Clerk Iva Nelson for the roll call.
Councilwoman Toles?
Here.
President Williams is absent today and our meeting is being chaired by President Protem, Councilman Cannon. Councilman Worthy?
Here.
Eccles?
He's here.
He's waving. Councilman Eccles?
I'm here.
Billingsley?
Here.
Cannon?
Here.
And Reed?
Here.
We have a quorum present and our meeting is open for business. I'm going to ask Shane Ellison to lead the invocation. Please stand and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us pray. Father, we just give thanks for the day that you've given us. We give thanks for the young people in attendance today. We just ask that you bless all those that are less fortunate than us, especially during this Christmas season. We do pray for this council and the mayor, that you just give them wisdom, Lord, in all that they do, and good health. We give thanks for our city and pray your blessings upon it, and we just ask all these things in Jesus' name today. Amen.
(Inaudible) allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The Chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the Community Development Committee meeting, work session, and city council meeting held on November the 28th.
So moved.
Second. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries to approve minutes.
The Chair will entertain a motion to ratify payments of the camp for the week of November the 24th through the 30th.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries to ratify payment of the accounts.
Today, we have a very special presentation by the Head Start Choir, Mr. Johnny and their leaders. Would you please come up? I just want to say it's an honor and a privilege to have y'all here today. We usually have a bunch of old folks like myself up here, and this tickles my heart to see these young folks coming. Why we're waiting for 'em all to get ready, this right here is a generation that'll probably take our place one of these days up here. Mayor, you got anything to add to that?
I said bless their hearts.
Good morning.
My name is Johnny Plonard. Along with me is Devon Williams, Mr. Bobby Abrams, Ms. Gloria McDaniel, and Ms. Alma Patterson from Head Start, and some Head Start children that would like to share some joy with you and some love. To Mayor Guy, with the council and other council members, and to the entire city of Gadsden, we're so happy to be here, and we hope you will enjoy the performance as well as these children have really enjoyed practicing the performance. We have maybe sixteen of our children from our OSR classes, and that's our older children like (inaudible). I think we have four, five songs there we're sure. Open up with just a welcome song. I'm very glad you came today. (Music) 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 Our last song? Our last song is a Head Start song. So we'll do that in. (Music) 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 I forgot to recognize, we have some parents with us today, and some of our friends in the community. Do you have a word to say? Or a word that can shout out to you in your community?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you. We finished.
Thank you very much. That was a, that was really impressive.
Can I say something? I'm a proud product of Head Start, and I appreciate you all coming. I just got one question. They still serve those yellow grits? They changed, but they were good.
We really want to thank the parents that brought the little children today. We appreciate y'all coming, doing this, and singing for us. It was really great. Mr. Johnny, we appreciate you coming and helping them too there.
Thank you.
You know, as city council members, we don't hardly ever get a lot of people that comes and sings to us at this time of year, but I appreciate y'all.
They come and cry though.
The next one brings us to Proclaimations Number Eight. Mayor?
(Inaudible) 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 I have a proclamation today. I about lost my voice. The City of Gadsden recognizes the water quality of our rivers and streams affect all of its citizens. The City of Gadsden along with the surrounding cities and agencies such as Keep Etowah Beautiful and the Gadsden Water Works and Sewer Board have joined in in the efforts to improve our water quality. The City of Gadsden recognizes that one means of achieving better water quality is through the education of its citizens regarding factors that impact it. On December 8, 2017, the City of Gadsden, Keep Etowah Beautiful, the Gadsden Water Works, and the Sewer Board, and several other cosponsors will host the annual water festival. The goal of this festival is to educate all fourth graders in the City of Gadsden as well as Etowah County about water quality and to encourage all citizens of the City of Gadsden to become involved to help improve water quality. Whereas the City of Gadsden is committed to protecting our rivers and streams, we ask all citizens to join us in this work. As we work together, we can have a greater impact on our environment and our city. Therefore, I, Sherman Gotten, Mayor of the City of Gadsden, by virtue of the authority vested in me, do hereby proclaim December 3rd through December 9th, 2017, is Water Quality Awareness Week in the City of Gadsden. And this event is usually held at Gadsden State Community College. Big crowd, all the kids from all the schools come. Jeremy Ward is, I think he's working on something, but he usually is the, he's over the, all the water programs and everything, and does an outstanding job for us in the engineering department. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, for that. I think you said there were about 400 kids probably participating in that.
Also.
We're down to unfinished business. Nine A's ordinance amending City Code Section 94-1 regarding hours of operation of parks and recreation facilities. This ordinance was presented last week for the first reading. It provides clarification that will exist in enforcement of this provision. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this ordinance.
I move that we adopt.
Second.
Are there any discussion? Ms. Toles, you want to talk about this a little bit, about the hours? Or you want Jen to come and tell us a little bit about it?
She can, I think, because it also includes the cemetery. Just come and give us the hours of operation for the...
Sorry to put you on the spot like this.
It may be right here. Oh, yeah.
Just, can you give us just any changes that you have, basically?
This is the ordinance.
This general.
Yes, I, I do appreciate the... Oh, here we go. This is basically saying that all of our ballparks, playgrounds, and other public recreation areas, like the River Walk and the Boardwalk on both sides of the river, will be closing at 11:00 PM, and they will not open any earlier than 6:00 AM unless somebody is fishing at the New River Walk near Cusse Landon or on the Boardwalk side near Chili's. So that's the main ones of that, and then if there is any kind of event, special event, it does have to be approved for hours to extend later or open earlier. There's a, you have to camp. You cannot camp in any area unless it's a designated camping area, like our campground up at Knockaloo Falls, or any other area that has to be approved by myself or other people at City Hall, the mayor, and everyone else. All cemeteries, they close no later than sunset and no, and open no earlier than sunrise. I believe that is the main areas that are affected in this ordinance.
And no person that's under 19, if they're, under 19, they have to have someone with them that's 19 old?
Yes, that is correct, especially if you're fishing or in some of the playgrounds and at the Boardwalk area, Jack Ray Landing, you do have to be with somebody 19 or older.
And I think that also the purpose for this is that there are going to be new signage put up, and the code of the ordinance number will be put on the signs, and that way the police officers will have ready, available, the ordinance that will give them the right to do whatever they need to do.
That is correct, and we also have security out at some of our locations and help aid them also alongside with our police officers, and if the public has any questions, they know how to refer or get information on, information with the park hours.
Thank you.
Johnny, can I say a little something? And that specifically goes to camping out at the gazebo, sleeping at the trolley stops, and a lot of other places which people have been doing for quite a while. It's got to be a real nuisance to the public.
I think we've had some trouble on the, the walk up there going to the falls. I've had some people trying to camp out on Black Creek Trail.
That's right.
The bigger problem was Jack Ray Park.
Yeah.
That was the big one.
Yep.
Any more discussion? No further discussion. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the ordinance, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries to adopt.
Nine B is a resolution ordering abatement of nuisance at 1533 Tarrant Drive in District 1, Perez, Takia's, Alfredo, Exchange Bank being the last known owners. This resolution was tabled for 30 days on October the 31st. What is the pleasure of the council?
According to the, on the recommendation of the Building Department, we asked that it be tabled for another 30 days.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to table the resolution for an additional 30 days, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries to table for 30 days.
Nine C, no council action will be necessary regarding 1336 Council Avenue in District 5 because the nuisance had been abated by the owner. Nine D, is a resolution ordering abatement of nuisance at 1419 Harrelson Avenue in District 5, state of Alabama, and no certain right of redemption of Amy Ward, being last known owners. This resolution was tabled for 30 days on October 31st. What is the pleasure of the council?
Upon recommendation of the Building Department, I would offer another 30 days.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to table the resolution an additional 30 days, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries to table for 30 days.
Number 10, a public hearing was scheduled regarding a resolution for 131 East Cherry Street in District 4 will not be necessary. The owner has abated the nuisance, no council action is needed. Eleven, this is time and place to advertise to conduct a public hearing allowing anyone to speak in opposition to or in favor of resolution ordering abatement of nuisance on property at 2216 Sansom Avenue in District 6, Floyd Stephen Whiteside and Wild Brenda C. Whiteside being the last known owners. Is there anyone here who'd like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Anyone opposed? Does anyone here wish to speak in favor?
Mr. President, I'm Brian Harbison with the Building Department. We started this case in June of this year. There've been no improvements, there are no permits to improve, and we're asking today for a resolution to abate the nuisance.
What is the pleasure of the council?
I move that we abate the nuisance.
Second.
Are there any discussion? No further discussion. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries to adopt.
Number 12, our final public hearing is resolution ordering abatement of nuisance on property at 2705 Lookout Avenue in District 7, Jonathan Duckworth, and certain rights of redemption of Alan Don Beard and Terry Elaine Rector Beard being last known owners. Is anyone here would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Anyone here opposed? Does anyone here wish to speak in favor?
Mr. President, we started this case in May. There've been no improvements, there are no permits to improve, and we're asking today for a resolution to abate the nuisance.
Move to abate.
Second.
Are there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries to adopt.
Number 13 is a resolution authorizing donation of a 1996 GMC Rescue Unit to Pink Hills Upper Alabama Chapter. This transfer ownership of a pink surplus fire truck used for breast cancer awareness and allows utilization outside of the city. The city will still have access to the vehicle for events inside the city limits. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second. Are there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries to adopt.
Number 14 is a resolution authorizing application and acceptance of Homeland Security equipment grant. This is for hazardous material equipment, four air monitors, and a new weather station for the hazmat unit, four hazmat suits and two skids, and the amount is $14,052. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second. Are there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries to adopt.
We have a first reading today. Number 15 is ordinance repealing Section 2-409 of the City Code. This removes prevailing wage requirements for certain contracts. The Davis Bacon Act will still comply with any contracts involving federal funds. The ordinance has been presented today for the first reading, and the council will vote on this next week. Brings us down to new business. Do we have any new business?
Me. Mr. President, I have two. Ordinance 44466, ordinance amending Chapter 6 alcoholic beverages, Article 2 licenses, Section 6-49 location restrictions, as per unanimous consent to consider.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the ordinance today as an item of new business, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? We have unanimous consent for consideration.
Now move to adopt.
Second.
Are there any discussion?
Yeah, Mr. President, this is actually reducing the number of feet between schools and, to, from 300 feet to 200 feet, schools and churches. How many, 250 did I? Okay, from 300 feet to 250 feet.
Any more discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the ordinance, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
We have one no. Motion carries to adopt.
Do we have any further new business?
Yes, Mr. President, I have one more. It's a Resolution 483 authorizing representatives of the Salvation Army to conduct a roadblock as be unanimous consent to consider.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today as an item of new business, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Consent has been granted.
Yeah, move to adopt.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes, this is a roadblock. It's requested from the Salvation Army for December 16th, making an exception. This is an integral part of their budget, their annual budget, and everything that they do.
Any more discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries to adopt.
Any more new business? That brings us down to 17, remarks by the mayor and council. Councilman Reed, would you like to go first today?
Yeah, the only thing I'd like to say is anybody who ever doubted Head Start saw this morning what they can achieve. It's unbelievable. Got to hand it to them, they're great.
Councilman Billings?
Yes, I'd like to make an announcement that I was supposed to have a community meeting next Monday, which would be the second Monday of the month, but the building has been rented, so I will not have that meeting. And I'm also glad to have Head Start because my children went through Head Start, and I'm glad we didn't allow the mayor to sing today, so...
What a blessing.
Run our Christmas. I also would like to announce that in my district, there are a lot of wheelchair people with these electrical wheelchairs, and a lot of people are parking on the sidewalk. That means these people have to get out into the streets. So if you park on the sidewalk, please don't do that, because these people have to get into the streets, and a lot of our streets are pretty busy. So, and the police will give you a ticket if you get caught parking on the sidewalks. So, don't park on the sidewalks. So, don't park on the sidewalks, please. Thank you.
Councilman Worley?
Yes, want to announce the District Three Community Meeting will be this Thursday, December the seventh, from five thirty to seven, but will probably be there at seven thirty. The topic was strategic planning for the community and revitalization. Special guest will be the land project. Be at Coffee Community Center Cafeteria this Thursday. Also want to make an announcement about the, uh, Christmas parade, the Winter Wonderland Christmas Parade, Saturday, December the ninth, five PM. I think they'll be lining up around four o'clock there at Sixth Street on Tuscaloosa Avenue there, okay? And one more. The Drug and Beer Summit will be hosted by the Gaston, City of Gaston Public Safety Committee will be right here in this room on, uh, Thursday, December the fourteenth, from five to seven PM. The panelists will be medical, educational, first responders, and court system. And the public is invited and encouraged to attend. We need your inputs so we can try to alleviate the, uh, drug epidemic that's sweeping, uh, the city and really the country. And from what I understand, we had nine OD's on Saturday here in the city, so, that our medics had to respond to. So, we need to really try to do something. So, I'm encouraging the public to come out and give us your opinion along with the professionals because we need all the help we can get. Thank you.
Councilman Toad?
Uh, yes, on behalf of, um, Council President Williams and myself, we'd just like to thank those in District One and District Two that came out on Saturday at the East Gaston Community Center. Uh, that was a great showing. Special thanks to Wilbur Harrison, and of course, you know, Curly DeRamos was there cooking, so we appreciate you.
Mayor?
Yeah, I would just like to say that we got all the holidays coming up, so be careful.
Sounds like you got, your voice, you're losing your voice. That might be good, what do you think?
What saved us from his...
We have anything else? If we don't have anything else, ask for adjournment, please.
I move to adjourn.
We adjourn.
We didn't want to send that to you because you can go over your time limit, huh?